I'd like to call the City Council meeting of April 2, 2019 to order, please. And we have a roll call.
Councilmember Brunson?
Present.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Ruddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Mayor Warback?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. I have one public forum comment. Does anyone else have anything to say that is not on the agenda? Joaquin Jimenez, please.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to apologize. I missed one of the listening sessions, you know, back in March 17th. You know, but the same day it happened to be we had a Pescadero Planning Commission meeting in Pescadero. It was a big event, so I was also there, you know, I was present. What I'm here is several things. I don't go to San Francisco much, you know. I like Half from Bay, I'm a small community type of guy. I was in San Francisco last month, you know, I went to do a presentation. To the presentation, I drove around and I saw how things have changed in San Francisco. When I was younger, you know, my parents, we have family in San Francisco, we had family in San Francisco, actually they moved out. Part of the weekend routine that we used to do, we used to go visit family members, you know, in the Mission District. And things have changed, you know. I was surprised how much San Francisco has changed, you know. And one of the things that came to mind is I don't want Half from Bay to change. You know, the gentrification of San Francisco, you know, there's more businesses, they moved out. You know, I drove by on Mission Street, you know, a place I used to buy, you know, tennis shoes and shirts and pants, you know. I used to get my St. Seaton shoes, you know, there's a store, they just recently closed, you know, and not one that would happen to have Half from Bay. San Francisco, I just read about San Francisco doing something, you know. There's nonprofit organizations in San Francisco who are buying building, apartment buildings to make sure that these tenants, you know, they don't get evicted, to make sure they leave the place, you know, for these tenants, you know, that they're not able to afford the higher rents. You know, this is happening in San Francisco, you know. Nonprofit organizations are taking those steps. You know, I'm not saying Half from Bay should do the same thing, you know, I'm not saying that, but it's just, you know, San Francisco is a bigger city, you know, Half from Bay is a small community, looking up to the older sister, older brother, you know, something similar. I read two different articles, you know, on Half from Bay Review, and I'm going to tell you, it felt really good to read those articles, you know. Some of you were quoted on the paper, you know. What kind of made me go emotional was something that I read. Quality of life is nothing without a place to go home, you know. And that touched me, you know, and it did to a lot of the people that I shared the eye with, you know, it was like, this is what we're talking about, this is what I'm talking about. You know, the city of Half from Bay or city council, the city staff, you know, the people that we trust. Thank you.
I'd like to call the City Council meeting of April 2, 2019 to order, please. And we have a roll call.
Councilmember Brunson?
Present.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Ruddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Mayor Warback?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. I have one public forum comment. Does anyone else have anything to say that is not on the agenda? Joaquin Jimenez, please.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to apologize. I missed one of the listening sessions, you know, back in March 17th, you know, but the same day it happened to be we had a Pescadero Planning Commission meeting in Pescadero. It was a big event, so I was also there, you know, I was present. What I'm here is several things. I don't go to San Francisco much, you know. I like Half from Bay, I'm a small community type of guy. I was in San Francisco last month, you know, I went to do a presentation. To the presentation, I drove around and I saw how things have changed in San Francisco. When I was younger, you know, my parents, we have family in San Francisco, we had family in San Francisco, actually they moved out. We, part of the weekend routine that we used to do, we used to go visit family members, you know, in the Mission District. And things have changed, you know. I was surprised how much San Francisco has changed, you know. And one of the things that came to mind is I don't want Half from Bay to change. You know, the gentrification of San Francisco, you know, there's more businesses, they moved out. You know, I drove by on Mission Street, you know, a place I used to buy, you know, tennis shoes and shirts and pants, you know. I used to get my St. Seaton shoes, you know, there's a store, they just recently closed, you know, and not one that would happen to have Half from Bay. San Francisco, I just read about San Francisco doing something, you know. There's nonprofit organizations in San Francisco who are buying building, apartment buildings to make sure that these tenants, you know, they don't get evicted, to make sure they leave the place, you know, for these tenants, you know, that they're not able to afford the higher rents. You know, this is happening in San Francisco, you know. Nonprofit organizations are taking those steps. You know, I'm not saying Half from Bay should do the same thing, you know, I'm not saying that, but it's just, you know, San Francisco is a bigger city, you know, Half from Bay is a small community, looking up to the older sister, older brother, you know, something similar. I read two different articles, you know, on Half from Bay Review, and I'm going to tell you, it felt really good to read those articles, you know. Some of you were quoted on the paper, you know. What kind of made me go emotional was something that I read. Quality of life is nothing without a place to go home, you know. And that touched me, you know, and it did to a lot of the people that I shared the eye with, you know, it was like, this is what we're talking about, this is what I'm talking about. You know, the city of Half from Bay or city council, the city staff, you know, the people that we trust. Thank you.
I'd like to call the City Council meeting of April 2, 2019 to order, please. And we have a roll call.
Councilmember Brunson?
Present.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Ruddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Mayor Warback?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. I have one public forum comment. Does anyone else have anything to say that is not on the agenda? Joaquin Jimenez, please.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to apologize. I missed one of the listening sessions, you know, back in March 17th, you know, but the same day it happened to be we had a Pescadero Planning Commission meeting in Pescadero. It was a big event, so I was also there, you know, I was present. What I'm here is several things. I don't go to San Francisco much, you know. I like Half from Bay, I'm a small community type of guy. I was in San Francisco last month, you know, I went to do a presentation. To the presentation, I drove around and I saw how things have changed in San Francisco. When I was younger, you know, my parents, we have family in San Francisco, we had family in San Francisco, actually they moved out. We, part of the weekend routine that we used to do, we used to go visit family members, you know, in the Mission District. And things have changed, you know. I was surprised how much San Francisco has changed, you know. And one of the things that came to mind is I don't want Half from Bay to change. You know, the gentrification of San Francisco, you know, there's more businesses, they moved out. You know, I drove by on Mission Street, you know, a place I used to buy, you know, tennis shoes and shirts and pants, you know. I used to get my St. Seaton shoes, you know, there's a store, they just recently closed, you know, and not one that would happen to have Half from Bay. San Francisco, I just read about San Francisco doing something, you know. There's nonprofit organizations in San Francisco who are buying building, apartment buildings to make sure that these tenants, you know, they don't get evicted, to make sure they leave the place, you know, for these tenants, you know, that they're not able to afford the higher rents. You know, this is happening in San Francisco, you know. Nonprofit organizations are taking those steps. You know, I'm not saying Half from Bay should do the same thing, you know, I'm not saying that, but it's just, you know, San Francisco is a bigger city, you know, Half from Bay is a small community, looking up to the older sister, older brother, you know, something similar. I read two different articles, you know, on Half from Bay Review, and I'm going to tell you, it felt really good to read those articles, you know. Some of you were quoted on the paper, you know. What kind of made me go emotional was something that I read. Quality of life is nothing without a place to go home, you know. And that touched me, you know, and it did to a lot of the people that I shared the eye with, you know, it was like, this is what we're talking about, this is what I'm talking about. You know, the city of Half from Bay or city council, the city staff, you know, the people that we trust. Thank you.
I'd like to call the City Council meeting of April 2, 2019 to order, please. And we have a roll call.
Councilmember Brunson?
Present.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Ruddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Mayor Warback?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. I have one public forum comment. Does anyone else have anything to say that is not on the agenda? Joaquin Jimenez, please.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to apologize. I missed one of the listening sessions, you know, back in March 17th, you know, but the same day it happened to be we had a Pescadero Planning Commission meeting in Pescadero. It was a big event, so I was also there, you know, I was present. What I'm here is several things. I don't go to San Francisco much, you know. I like Half from Bay, I'm a small community type of guy. I was in San Francisco last month, you know, I went to do a presentation. To the presentation, I drove around and I saw how things have changed in San Francisco. When I was younger, you know, my parents, we have family in San Francisco, we had family in San Francisco, actually they moved out. We, part of the weekend routine that we used to do, we used to go visit family members, you know, in the Mission District. And things have changed, you know. I was surprised how much San Francisco has changed, you know. And one of the things that came to mind is I don't want Half from Bay to change. You know, the gentrification of San Francisco, you know, there's more businesses, they moved out. You know, I drove by on Mission Street, you know, a place I used to buy, you know, tennis shoes and shirts and pants, you know. I used to get my St. Seaton shoes, you know, there's a store, they just recently closed, you know, and not one that would happen to have Half from Bay. San Francisco, I just read about San Francisco doing something, you know. There's nonprofit organizations in San Francisco who are buying building, apartment buildings to make sure that these tenants, you know, they don't get evicted, to make sure they leave the place, you know, for these tenants, you know, that they're not able to afford the higher rents. You know, this is happening in San Francisco, you know. Nonprofit organizations are taking those steps. You know, I'm not saying Half from Bay should do the same thing, you know, I'm not saying that, but it's just, you know, San Francisco is a bigger city, you know, Half from Bay is a small community, looking up to the older sister, older brother, you know, something similar. I read two different articles, you know, on Half from Bay Review, and I'm going to tell you, it felt really good to read those articles, you know. Some of you were quoted on the paper, you know. What kind of made me go emotional was something that I read. Quality of life is nothing without a place to go home, you know. And that touched me, you know, and it did to a lot of the people that I shared the eye with, you know, it was like, this is what we're talking about, this is what I'm talking about. You know, the city of Half from Bay or city council, the city staff, you know, the people that we trust. Thank you.
I'd like to call the City Council meeting of April 2, 2019 to order, please. And we have a roll call.
Councilmember Brunson?
Present.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Ruddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Mayor Warback?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. I have one public forum comment. Does anyone else have anything to say that is not on the agenda? Joaquin Jimenez, please.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to apologize. I missed one of the listening sessions, you know, back in March 17th, you know, but the same day it happened to be we had a Pescadero Planning Commission meeting in Pescadero. It was a big event, so I was also there, you know, I was present. What I'm here is several things. I don't go to San Francisco much, you know. I like Half from Bay, I'm a small community type of guy. I was in San Francisco last month, you know, I went to do a presentation. To the presentation, I drove around and I saw how things have changed in San Francisco. When I was younger, you know, my parents, we have family in San Francisco, we had family in San Francisco, actually they moved out. We, part of the weekend routine that we used to do, we used to go visit family members, you know, in the Mission District. And things have changed, you know. I was surprised how much San Francisco has changed, you know. And one of the things that came to mind is I don't want Half from Bay to change. You know, the gentrification of San Francisco, you know, there's more businesses, they moved out. You know, I drove by on Mission Street, you know, a place I used to buy, you know, tennis shoes and shirts and pants, you know. I used to get my St. Seaton shoes, you know, there's a store, they just recently closed, you know, and not one that would happen to have Half from Bay. San Francisco, I just read about San Francisco doing something, you know. There's nonprofit organizations in San Francisco who are buying building, apartment buildings to make sure that these tenants, you know, they don't get evicted, to make sure they leave the place, you know, for these tenants, you know, that they're not able to afford the higher rents. You know, this is happening in San Francisco, you know. Nonprofit organizations are taking those steps. You know, I'm not saying Half from Bay should do the same thing, you know, I'm not saying that, but it's just, you know, San Francisco is a bigger city, you know, Half from Bay is a small community, looking up to the older sister, older brother, you know, something similar. I read two different articles, you know, on Half from Bay Review, and I'm going to tell you, it felt really good to read those articles, you know. Some of you were quoted on the paper, you know. What kind of made me go emotional was something that I read. Quality of life is nothing without a place to go home, you know. And that touched me, you know, and it did to a lot of the people that I shared the eye with, you know, it was like, this is what we're talking about, this is what I'm talking about. You know, the city of Half from Bay or city council, the city staff, you know, the people that we trust.
I'd like to call the City Council meeting of April 2, 2019 to order, please. And we have a roll call.
Councilmember Brunson?
Present.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Riddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Mayor Warback?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. I have one public forum comment. Does anyone else have anything to say that is not on the agenda? Joaquin Jimenez, please.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to apologize. I missed one of the listening sessions, you know, back in March 17th. You know, but the same day it happened to be we had a planning, Pescadero Planning Commission in a meeting in Pescadero. It was a big event. So I was also there, you know, I was present. What I'm here is several things. I don't go to San Francisco much, you know. I like Half Moon Bay, I like, I'm a small community type of guy. I was in San Francisco last month, you know, I went to do a presentation. So the presentation, I drove around and I saw how things have changed in San Francisco. When I was younger, you know, my parents, we have family in San Francisco, we had family in San Francisco, actually they moved out. We, part of the weekend routine that we used to do, we used to go visit family members, you know, down in the Mission District. And things have changed, you know. It's, I was surprised how much San Francisco has changed, you know. And one of the things that came to mind is I don't want Half Moon Bay to change. You know, the gentrification of San Francisco, you know, the small businesses, they moved out. You know, I drove by on Mission Street, you know, a place I used to buy, you know, tennis shoes and shirts and pants, you know. I used to get my St. Seaton shoes, you know, there's a store, they just recently closed, you know, and not one that would happen to have from Bay. San Francisco, I just read about San Francisco doing something, you know, there's nonprofit organizations in San Francisco who are buying building, apartment buildings to make sure that these tenants, you know, they don't get evicted, to make sure they give, they leave the, they leave the place, you know, for these tenants, you know, that they're not able to afford the higher rents. You know, this is happening in San Francisco, you know. Nonprofit organizations are taking those steps. You know, I'm not saying Half Moon Bay should do the same thing, you know, I'm not saying that, but it's just, you know, San Francisco is a bigger city, you know, Half Moon Bay is a small community looking up to like, looking up to the older sister, older brother, you know, something similar. I've read two different articles, you know, on Half Moon Bay Review, and I'm gonna tell you, it felt really good to read those articles, you know. Some of you were quoted on the, on the paper, you know. What kind of made me go emotional was something that I read, "Quality of life is nothing without a place to go home," you know. And that touched me, you know, and it did to a lot of the people that I shared the, you know, that I caught with. You know, it was like, this is what we're talking about. This is what I'm talking about. You know, that the city of Half Moon Bay or City Council, the city staff, you know, the people that we trust, you know, they're doing what, you know, what Mayor said, you know. We want people to know that we're doing things that we care about, that the community cares about. You know, I read that too, I read your quote, you know, and it is true, you know. I've been saying it several times, how much we appreciate you being here, you know, you're doing so much for our community that I haven't seen being done, you know, since I can remember, you know, and I wanna thank you. You know, this last article that came out that I, that I, you know, it gave us hope. You know, my brother Tony, he was giving up, you know, I shared with him a few things. He said, "Joaquin, I don't know, man, it's taking too long." I said, "Well, you have to say, you know, can I give him, give him a chance?" You know, but it's happening. You know, what we read on the paper, you know, is happening, something that we wanted to see Half Moon Bay happen, it is happening. And I wanna thank you, you know, and I'm sure a lot of the community members wanna thank you as well. Thank you.
Now, thank you, Joaquin. Next item is Proclaimations and Presentations. Claire Touton from the Midcoast Community Council is gonna report on what they're doing.
Good evening. Claire Touton, Chair of Midcoast Community Council. Like Half Moon Bay, we've been trying to deal with the aftermath of, and the implications of the tunnel and road closures. We not only were impacted by that one event, but on top of that, on St. Patrick's Day, the coast, the midcoast from Miramar to Montero was totally cut off from either Pacifica or Half Moon Bay by two or three closures on Highway 1, which alarms us in terms of communications and emergency services. So we're having, the MCC is having a series of three meetings to address some of these issues. We're meeting with the Highway Patrol, who were there last week, with Caltrans, hopefully, and with the Sheriff and OES, and all of this will lead into the May 4th emergency event being held in Half Moon Bay. So on a lighter note, the Moss Beach Playground is being closed for renovations, and they're putting in some really cool play structures that are all coastside oriented, like boats and starfish and things like that. So we're looking forward to that. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Mayor's announcements of community activities and community service? Oh, that's me. This is embarrassing, sorry. I don't have any announcements. So, the city manager updates the council, that's what I was expecting. City manager, sorry.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do have one announcement I would like to make, and I just wanna acknowledge Joaquin's comments. It was really nice comments that he made about his feelings about Half Moon Bay, and I think in part it's because of people who I'm gonna mention in a second. So I had the opportunity this weekend, on Sunday, to go to a really cool event. Bay Nature Magazine has an annual gala, and they give out Local Heroes Awards. And if you don't, if you're not familiar with Bay Nature Magazine, it's like, someone said it's like National Geographic for the Bay Area. So it's a pretty cool environmental magazine and does great articles and great photography. And so I had the opportunity to go to this event. It was in Berkeley, on the other side of the bay, so there was a lot of East Bay folks there. But it was in a great building, I forget the name of the building, but it's just a wonderful building designed by Julia Morgan, really cool spot, there was 200 or 300 people there. So just a great event, and they gave out four awards to their local heroes, and the top award went to someone who's very known on the coast side, and she's here today, Lenny Roberts. So I was really impressed seeing her get the award. I was, I was there for her and for a few others that I knew that were there, and she got the top award, the Citizen Hero Award, and she was honored by all these folks. And just a few things about her, and then I'll maybe turn it over to her. Everyone knows her, I've just gotten to know her since I've been here for the past few months, but she's been very active in community events and open space issues for over 40 years. She joined the Committee for Green Foothills back in 1968, so that's over 40 years ago. She was one of the original founders of Mid Peninsula Open Space in 1972, and of course, she was behind Measure T in 1996, which required Caltrans to build a tunnel instead of a freeway bypass at Devil's Slide. So I just wanted to make that acknowledgement, 'cause I don't know if you were, the council was aware of that, and if the community was aware of that, and I asked Lenny to come tonight so we could acknowledge her.
Lenny?
There, it's red. Red means on, okay. That's a new, that's a new cue. Well, I thank you so much, Bob, that was very nice, and it was, it was a lovely event in a place that actually has some family connections, because my grandmother was on the board of the Berkeley Women's City Club at the time, not, just after they built the building. So I, and I'd never been there before, and it's just a fabulous, fabulous Julia Morgan masterpiece. So if you ever have a chance to go, you should do that. But I just, I'll give you a couple of things, I'll say a little bit about Devil's Slide, because this is what I focused on. Many people who are on the coast today don't really, don't know that without people intervening, beginning in the 50s and 60s, before I was involved even, Half Moon Bay would have been a city of 100,000 people by 1990, and another 100,000 people down on the south coast, that was the county's plan. And the Devil's Slide bypass was the first step to make that happen. So Caltrans designed the six-lane Cabrillo freeway bypass of Devil's Slide in back in the 50s. And in 1971, when the bulldozers were just about to begin building it as a seven-mile bypass of a 600-foot-long problem, C.R. Club and Committee for Green Foothills went to court, and we literally stopped the bulldozers that were poised to begin construction. Then for the next 25 years, we had to keep going to court, and also we had to deal with outrageous behavior on the part of Caltrans at the time. The leaders in Caltrans were just tunnel vision, not to make a pun, about freeways, and they labeled the environmentalists or anybody who questioned their freeway plans as the enemy, and they prohibited their staff from talking to us even. And most egregiously, when they had to do the environmental impact report that the court required them to do, they changed the professional conclusions of their staff in three ways. They first, overruled determinations that the bypass would be made, their professional biologists had said it would be devastating to sensitive habitats. One of the people studying the fog on top of Montero Mountain concluded that would be very unsafe for 65 mile an hour speeds to go up these 7%, grades and into the fog. And then, you would, they had, the most egregious thing was that they concluded, the staff concluded that the bypass would be growth-inducing. I mean, we, obviously a six-lane freeway is going to be growth-inducing, but they said it wasn't. So one of their staff, Reed Holderman, who went on to become a Coast Conservancy staff person, and also the head of Semper Virus Fund, he was working at the Caltrans at the time, and he blew the whistle on this behavior. So we had an early whistleblower that we joined hence, was he actually provide depositions for our court case. And ultimately, we, we, we got the, we got the environmental impact report done, but eventually, we were about ready to run out of legal options and political options, because we couldn't get the Board of Supervisors, we couldn't get three votes on the Board of Supervisors, we only had two. So we resorted to the people, and we gathered 33,000 signatures to insist on a tunnel. And guess who got the most signatures in that campaign?
The county.
That's right. He was far and above everybody, but we gathered signatures from all over the county. We had people at shopping centers all over, with models of the tunnel and the mountain and the bypass, and it was quite, it was quite the, it was quite an event. So in November 1996, after we qualified for the ballot, the voters passed Measure T throughout San Mateo County, all the voters, by a landslide 74% majority. Anybody who runs for office knows how important that majority is. So, the best part of the story, though, is once the voters mandated the tunnel, there were new people at Caltrans, and they became our allies and even our friends. Even though they had not built a tunnel in California for 40 years, new leadership wholeheartedly got with the program and engaged the community, and not only did the tunnelistas save the coast from sprawling development, we also changed the culture at Caltrans. So my takeaway, as always, is that citizen action is always going to be necessary to keep agencies and elected officials honest and doing their job on behalf of the environment, as well as on behalf of the people. So that's, that's the Devil's Slide story in a nutshell. We don't have 100,000 people here, imagine what the traffic would be like if we did. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny. On behalf of the whole City Council, we really appreciate what has been done and what we still need to do. Those of you who haven't seen pictures of what Westinghouse put out about what the coast was gonna look like in the 70s and 80s, with over 100,000 people, with high rises on both sides of Highway 1, be very thankful of what we have now, so we, we're grateful. City Manager, are there other updates?
Mr. Mayor, that's my only report for today.
Thank you. I skipped over the report out of a closed session, there were no reportable actions. On the consent calendar, does anyone wanna pull anything? I already have one public comment on Item 1E. Does anyone else wanna pull anything? Can I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the consent calendar. Item 1A, waive reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, treasurer's report for the quarter ending December 31, 2018. Item 1C, approval of an alternative work schedule policy, global positioning system policy, and vehicle usage policy, and driver authorization. Item 1D, approval of side letters to memorandums of understanding and amendments to compensation and benefits plans concerning the use of sick leave toward bereavement leave. Item 1F, multi-way stop control analysis, intersection of Miramonde's Avenue and Pillar Cidos Avenue extension, Hatch Elementary School. And now we need a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like a staff report on Item 1E, please. John? No?
Good evening. I'm Maz Musugini, a city engineer. So tonight, before you have the agreement for Mark Thomas Amendment to incorporate the final design and project plans for, for the Highway 1 North project, you have a couple of action items on the agenda. One is to execute the funding agreement with San Mateo County to get, for the Measure A funds, for the grant funding that we have on the project. We're also doing the, and the big item is the execution of the service agreement with Mark Thomas for the full PSNE package. What you've seen to date is, is the conceptual version, a lighter version of the project plans, and what this would allow us to do is move forward and complete the design. And the rationale behind the segmenting of the contract was, we had to get the Caltrans peer approval, as well as the environmental done before the TA, the San Mateo County Transit Authority, would authorize the funding for final design. With that, that's the extent of the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have one public comment. Jerry Steinberg, please.
The answer to that question is yes.
Okay. Well, congratulations to the staff, Jill, John, Maz, and the consultant Ray Rosavi, on receiving the Caltrans project approval. What started about 15 years ago, after Half Moon Bay City badly executed construction drainage project in the Terrace Silver area, converted the proposed location of a stoplight entry to Beechwood and the Pacific Ridge Developments to a seasonal wetland. Admittedly, success in obtaining the peer review was helped by changes in personnel at all the review agencies and the new environmental Half Moon Bay consultant. Additionally, the dedication of the city-owned Beechwood property as a wetland mediation bank with no development or need to entry on Highway 1 contributed. The Terrace Ave renewed entry on Highway 1, game of playing chicken, and drive a confusion going, getting onto Highway 1 to a new second lane, now moves up to Grandview Boulevard. The addition of the bike path on the east side of Highway 1 from Spindrift to North Main was a great new addition to the proposed project for lessening the traffic up Terrace to the back door of the high school at Highland. Hopefully, the Pacific Ridge Homeowners Association will maintain their chain locked and spread apart wire fence with no trespassing signs by ability. The building of a home on Highland at Golden Gate closed off the entry to the pedestrian property. The issue of a right turn on Silver will be again raised when the pedestrian property and the exit onto Quartz comes up again. The proof of the pudding will be whether the safety conditions are improved after the project completion. Also, how much traffic the Highway North communities are affected. Good luck.
Thank you, Jerry. Does the council have any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanna say, I wanna thank Jerry for sticking with this issue and shining a light on the process and the project itself. I've learned a lot from you, both at these meetings and, you know, on a couple of occasions when we've been able to meet, so I am supportive of the project, but you've given me a lot to think about, and I think the council, a lot to think about, and staff. So I just wanna say thank you for that, Jerry.
May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to move that we accept the Highway 1 Safety and Operational Improvements Project North, the CIP Project Number 538. As written, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a funding agreement with San Mateo County Transportation Authority to accept Measure A funds in the amount of $300,000 for the design of Highway 1 Safety and Operational Improvements Project North. CIP Project Number 538 and 2, execute a professional services agreement with Mark Thomas and Company Incorporated for the preparation of plans, specifications, and estimates in an amount not to exceed $945,000. not to exceed $945,000.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. The next item is to do with the Sewer Authority Midcoast Side Fiscal Year 2019-20 Operations and Maintenance Budget. Staff report, please.
While we're waiting for this for a second, I wanted to recognize Richard Tanaka from Mark Thomas. He did come tonight, just in the event that there was an issue, so. And then, I would say, and ditto everything that you said with regard to Jerry. Jerry is a gentleman, and while we have not always agreed on everything, we have done it, and he has always done it in a very meaningful and nice and appropriate way, and I appreciate that, and I know staff does as well. And, so, we look forward to continued conversations. No, it's not. So, we're here early this time for, earlier than usual, for the Sewer Authority Midcoast Side Operations and Maintenance Budget. And, thank you for, I guess, that doesn't work? I'll click it. Tonight, what we are asking for is your approval of the Fiscal Year 2019-20 Sewer Authority Midcoast Side Operations and Maintenance Budget, which is in the amount of $7,414,433. This includes, as it has for many years, the truly operations and maintenance side, running the sewer treatment plant, running the intertie pipeline system, and managing and cleaning and doing all of those things. Also, it includes the capital improvement program and project list. As we have stated for the last countless years, we would absolutely prefer that SAM operate with a distinct and separate capital improvement program and have operations and maintenance not intermixed with those for the obvious reasons that by doing so under the JPA, the Joint Powers Authority, we would have the authority to agree or disagree with the inclusion of our dollars in any given capital project. And, without saying much more, that is, in part, or a great part of the basis of our conversation and purpose for our request for declaratory relief. And it really comes down to a very simple issue of, is it a capital project or not? If it's a capital project, then we think it should be in a capital budget, and let us decide. And it also modifies the splits slightly in terms of percentages. That being said, we are where we are, and we are at this point. Your SAM representatives approved or recommended approval in sending this forward to you at a recent meeting, and we are here to follow through with that. Don't have to spend too much time, but again, just SAM is a joint powers authority representing both the city as well as Montero and Granada districts, and under that, we jointly basically operate through that joint powers agreement, the SAM Treatment Plant. We have a sewer treatment plant which has excess capacity at this point. Dry weather flows are ranging around 4.0 million gallons, which is substantially less than what the operating design is for. So, wet weather flow is where we have our challenges. All the districts are contributing in terms of inflow and infiltration from storm water, and that's our challenge. The, as indicated, the SAM budget this year is at $7,414,433. This represents a 22% increase over the adopted 2018-19 budget. And going back to the 2017-18, the 2018-19 budget represented a 23% adjustment over. So, we have been seeing this pretty significant escalation in operating costs, in part because of negotiated employee negotiations, which is just part of the process and the requirements that you've got to do. Part of that comes from a more emphasis on maintaining the treatment plant appropriately so it will be there and continue to operate. As your representatives can tell you, we've had multiple emergency repairs, and emergency repairs always cost you more, so the idea is, less emergencies, more regular maintenance and more regular repairs. And your representatives have been advocating strongly for SAM and general manager and its crew to identify where the problems lie, identify the fixes, and to get them on the list for approval rather than continue to pay for late night, weekend callouts for emergency work and repair. Harvey, your mayor, has also been engaged with that of recent, as well as the alternate on there, and Adam. So the four of you have had an opportunity for, for experience with SAM. So what does this mean for the city? Basically, the city's share this year, which is based on a calculation of the Montero-Granada flows through their very precise flow meters, and we get the remainder. It doesn't mean that our flows are actually that, it just means that by calculation, we get the remainder, and this year, it's at 56%. Our share of the flow cost-based assessment has increased from about 49% three years ago to 56%. So, not an insignificant adjustment as well, so it explains, to some extent, why we're also continuing to see an increase in the budget. Our budget this year is just a little over $4.1 million in total cost. And, again, this represents a 23% increase for the city, is a 22% overall, so the other agencies are seeing over 20% increase, and the city's is 23%. As indicated, there are a number of components to that, but one of those being is the reason why there's an increase. A big piece of that is that the agency managers met with the general manager of SAM and suggested that we try to smooth out the capital cost, particularly with the IPS, the intertie pipeline system backbone infrastructure system, and that we just get to a flat $1.25 million annually for the next five years that would be put into a fund and allow SAM to accrue money as they need to and do the work and do the projects without having to have spikes and valleys in the costing out for that. So, it, so this represents a, an increase in cost to us, but it will ultimately result in no increase, and hopefully, some flattening or at least mellowing out of the, of the peaks and the valleys of payment for the IPS. Again, all the $700,000 that will be our share of that will be made under protest continuing until such time as declaratory relief or settlement of the litigation is made. And again, there's adjustments, legal services, there's litigation from the Ecological Resource Foundation with regard to the spill a few years ago, and other issues in terms of legal costs, again, preventive maintenance of the treatment plant, and then a new MOU with Operating Engineers 39, which includes COLA step adjustments, additional retirement cost, premium pay increases, and a whole host of those things. And those things are pretty clearly identified in your attachment 2, which were included with the packet. So, again, our recommendation, and which follows suit with the recommendation from your board representatives, is to approve the Fiscal Year 1920 Sewer Authority SAM Operations and Maintenance Budget. And with the caveat that we are expressly noting the city's protest of the, of any and all costs associated with repair and replacement of the intertie pipeline system, and that's consistent with the term set forth in the 2017 Stipulation Order, and also conditioned upon SAM creating the Capital Reserve Fund for the IPS Backbone Infrastructure. And those are included within the resolution and will be conveyed as part of a cover letter that, that we'll prepare to send your final resolution and budget decision, if that's made tonight, toward that. With that, that concludes my presentation. Happy to try to answer questions.
Any questions, council? That's impressive that you made such a good presentation that we have no questions.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
With that, may I have a motion, please?
I move we adopt a resolution approving the Fiscal Year 2019-20 Sewer Authority Midcoast Side Operations and Maintenance Budget of $7,414,433, expressly noting the city protest of any and all costs associated with the repair and replacement of the intertie pipeline system, consistent with the term set forth in the September 13th, 2017 Stipulation Order, and conditioned upon the creation of a Capital Reserve Fund for IPS Backbone Infrastructure.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Thank you. Do we have any future agenda items that we want to bring up at this time? In terms of city council reports, Debbie, do you want to talk about our ledge adventure? Or do you want me to do it?
I will defer to the mayor.
Okay.
I'll pipe in to fill my...
All right. I had a very educational experience. The legislative subcommittee, which is Debbie Riddick and myself, along with our city manager, our, what's Jessica's new title?
Communication director.
Communications director, met with our legislative... Delegation. We met five different people in Sacramento. I found it really interesting. We met with Kevin Mullen, Jerry Hill, Mark Berman, and then in the afternoon, we met with Caltrans representative and the California Department of Transportation representatives and Transportation Commission. Thank you, Debbie. The legislators who are, represent us on the coast were very helpful. They really wanted to do what was best for the coast in terms of housing, emergency preparedness. I really was glad to see that. I wish I could say the same for our Caltrans and CDC people. There's a lot of finger pointing going on there. But I found it fascinating. I had never been inside the Capitol Building, and Debbie has extensive experience there, so if she wanted to add anything, feel free.
Yeah, I think that city hall staff and the city clerk's office, including Jonathan and Michaela, did a wonderful job with our consultant Alex Gibbs from Townsend, putting together an itinerary, securing face-to-face meetings with legislators, you know, not, not staff, but the legislators themselves. We got an extensive amount of time, you know, we were there maybe half an hour or more in, I think, a couple of cases. And I know from experience that most of the time, you get about 10 minutes with a staffer, a junior staffer. So this was, this was really good, and the city manager was really good about teeing off the various issues and summarizing where we were, and the mayor talking about our goals, and they were very receptive. And, one of the, there were like a couple of action items that I can recall, maybe you can recall more, but the, the team of Senator Hill and Assembly members Berman and Mullen have scheduled a meeting on April 25th at Hafn Bay High School from, I believe it's 7:00. 7:00 to 8:15, to talk about the issue of the Caltrans, the tunnel closure on the 12th. You know, what happened, what can we do to avoid this going forward, both in terms of equipment, in terms of backup, and also communications protocols? How do we avoid two of our three access routes, you know, being closed at the same time? So, they're, they're all over this, and I think there'll be more coming out about the meeting on April 25th. They might even move it to a larger venue, so you'll, you'll be hearing more about that. There's also the potential, we discussed, for what they call a member's request. So the, we're approaching the, what they call the May revise of the state budget. So, the governor introduces a budget in January, and then in, in May, after discussions between the administration and the legislature, they, they came up with a revised budget. So oftentimes, members make additional requests for funding for specific things having to do with their districts. So we talked about the possibility of a member's request for some sort of backup system so that when the electricity goes out, there's either a diesel generator or a battery or some other system that keeps the fans moving so that we can use the tunnel. And I don't know what the status of that member's request is. I think that's part of the follow-up we have to do, but that could be, you know, a very big deal. And, so we were, we were grateful for the time and attention. I would consider it a success. I think it was a good team effort, and I think you'll be hearing more about that. And, I think, overall, the idea of having a legislative platform and getting out there and making our asks, it's a good first step, and I think we will be continuing that, and I think the public will be pleased to have some outcomes there. So, thanks to everyone all around.
Yes, it really, I am grateful to staff for setting that up. I think it's a step in the right direction to actually start interacting with our legislators, and this April 25th meeting should be really interesting. This was, as far as I can tell, Senator Hill's idea. It was new to all of us, but it really sounds like something worthwhile. He's going to have not only Caltrans there, but AT&amp;T and Comcast. So, they'll have a hard time evading the hard questions that we've been asking, but now with the backup of Senator Hill, Speaker Pro Tem Mullen, and Assemblyman Mark Berman. I think maybe somebody's going to start listening to us about the importance of emergency preparedness on the coast, so I'm looking forward to that meeting. That's April 25th at 7:00 PM. Are there any other council reports?
Did you coordinate that with the Midcoast Community Council as well? Because you know all those letters we got from people that are living in like Moss Beach and El Granada and all that stuff.
Not yet, but I'm sure we're going to get a lot of publicity out, and the high school auditorium may not be big enough to allow all the people who want to go to talk about emergency preparedness on the coast, so, yeah.
I haven't attended it yet, but I may not be at the next council meeting to report on this, but I just wanted to let everyone know that our library has been honored as the recipient of award from Sustainable San Mateo County. They gave three awards for projects done in this past year, and our library is one of them. So Jerry Hill will be heading that meeting, and I'll be doing a short presentation this Wednesday or Thursday.
Is this Thursday or...
Yeah.
A number of us last week attended a Home for All convening session, and it featured representatives from Washington DC organization called the Framework Institute. And, it was very enlightening. They focus on how to frame issues to get people not only involved, but get community, communities... communities moving forward towards solutions. And it was interesting, they talked about, they said, using the word affordability all the time, or housing crisis tends to freeze people. Or often, it might get some folks in the community saying, "Well, you know, if it's not affordable here, then maybe you should live somewhere else." That's just how it is. Housing prices go up. It's run by the market. And it moves people away from feeling that they're empowered to have solutions as a community. And they instead talked a lot about using words like access, you know? You need folks to have access to homes and for there to be more availability. And there's a difference. When you use the word availability, it gets you thinking of other options, ADUs, other existing properties that might be available, different kinds of alternate funding, et cetera. And I thought it was a very productive conversation in terms of, and certainly a resource that we'll continue to use on how we speak about these issues, and really focus a lot more on what the opportunities are and how there needs to be a, there's a community interdependence. So, you know, whether we're talking about wages in a town, or, you know, what happens when people get displaced and students, and what we want for our community, that we are. We're interdependent, we're all each other's neighbors, and we can all work on solutions together. So I thought it was a very positive way of looking at the issue.
This meeting is adjourned.